In the event, this meeting will be conducted pursuant to 25 Oklahoma's statute 307-1. An announcement will be made at the beginning of the meeting and that if connections are lost, the city will attempt to restore communications for a maximum of 30 minutes. If we're not able to do that, then we will reconvene at a certain date, time, and place.
Mark, if it's okay, just keep going if it disconnects me.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you, and our mayor's attending video conference. So would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Have a couple of proclamations to read. The first one is for Emergency Medical Services Week. And this one reads, whereas emergency medical services are vital public service as members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate for those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical service teams consist of emergency medical technicians, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, paramedics, firefighters, educators, and administrators who engage in hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas the citizens of Moore benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly-trained individuals and value the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers, and whereas injury prevention and the appropriate use of emergency medical service system will help reduce national healthcare costs, therefore it be resolved that I, Vice Mayor Mark Ham, on behalf of our Mayor Glenn Lewis of the City of Moore, Oklahoma, urge all citizens of Moore to publicly join me in proclaiming the week of May 16 through 22, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, approved and signed the 17th day of May, 2021. Yep, so we do say thanks to all of those that were mentioned in here for your work in helping to keep us safe. I'm glad that I've never needed an ambulance, but if I ever do, I want the best to come to my house. So thank you very much. The other proclamation that I have to read is for National Public Works Week. Whereas the City of Moore, Oklahoma, designates May 16 through May 22, 2021, as National Public Works Week in the City of Moore, and whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance of sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, well-being of the people of Moore, and whereas public works personnel of the City of Moore are involved in the maintenance, planning, design, and construction of streets, transportation facilities, parks, playfields, open spaces, creeks, paths, storm drains, stormwater treatment, public buildings, operations of recycling, solid waste, and environmental programs and facilities, right-of-way management, and emergency planning and response, and whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Moore to gain knowledge of and to maintain progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works, infrastructure, and services in their respective communities. And the year of 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and whereas the 2021 National Public Works Week theme is Stronger Together, representing the role public works plays in keeping the community strong by providing and orchestrating the infrastructure and essential services, and working in concert with a variety of stakeholders to create a great place to live. Now therefore, I, Vice Mayor Mark Ham, on behalf of our Mayor Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through 22, 21, as National Public Works Week in the City of Moore, and urge all citizens of Moore, civic fraternity groups, education associations, news media, and other community organizations to join this salute to honor the society members by encouraging and promoting the celebration of achievements of this high-achieving group as they contribute to economic, civic, and cultural purposes. Approved and signed the 17th day of May, 2021, by our Mayor Glenn Lewis. Again, thank you very much. And Tony Minso, would you like to come up here and receive this on behalf of the public works and all that so many of them do for our city? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let them know we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item would to receive an update from Steve Eady with the Regional Transportation Authority Board of Directors regarding the regional public transportation. So, Mr. Eady, if you wouldn't mind coming up here, he is the city's representative that we appointed a while back to represent the City of Moore's interests for the RTA. Thanks for coming.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. It's a privilege to be here with you tonight. It's been a while. We thank you for the opportunity to come back and tell you what's going on with the RTA. I thank you for the opportunity to serve as your representative on the board, and I think there's some exciting things that are happening and that are going to be happening in the foreseeable future. I'd really like to ask Jason Fairbrush to come up and just to kind of give you an overview of what's going on, and then we'll be able to answer any questions, or hopefully be able to answer any questions that you might have. Jason is the interim director for the RTA. His real job, and his day job, so to speak, is he's the director of Cockpil in Oklahoma City. So if that's okay with you, we'll have Jason, I'd ask Jason to come up and give you a little bit of a presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks a lot for having me. Again, my name is Jason Fairbrush, interim executive director for the RTA. Have the pleasure of working with Director Eady and the rest of the board with the RTA in trying to advance transit for our region. So, yeah, just a couple of comments tonight, really, just to kind of let you know what's been going on with the RTA, you know, what kind of work have we been getting done, what's being accomplished, and then, you know, what do we have to look forward to? And so, really, what I wanted to, you know, start with was just a quick reminder of kind of where the RTA originated and kind of what's got us to here. And so, as you guys, as you all probably recall, prior to the RTA itself, there was an RTA Task Force, right, and the City of Moore was part of that task force. And from that task force, there was like an initial local contribution, if you will, of funding to try to just see, you know, how can the RTA be furthered and what will develop from this task force. So then, fast forward from about 2016, 2017 timeframe to 2019, and of course, that is when the RTA was actually officially formed. It was a historic moment for our region to have this new government entity, really, that's, you know, comprised of six member cities, really with the idea of advancing transit for the region, for the benefit of all of those six cities. And so that occurred in 2019. And since 2019, the RTA has been busy behind the scenes, doing all the kinds of things you could imagine are, have been required, really to get us to the region, that is, to get the region to the point where we can start making some decisions on overall, the overall project, project costs, FTA processes, and that kind of thing. So just a kind of a quick rundown of what the RTA's been up to since, really, 2019 is, one is, we've engaged Burlington Northern Santa Fe in negotiations, right? So if you're familiar at all with the commuter corridor study that was led by ACOG, great study, great job by ACOG, one of the corridors for high-capacity public transit that was identified was a north-south corridor, basically from Edmund to Norman, right through Moore using BNSF Railroad Right-of-Way. So obviously, to be able to share that right-of-way or share those tracks, BNSF has to agree, right? So a lot of time has been spent, you know, engaging BNSF in some negotiations. During those negotiations, one of the things we learned is that for, you know, a private company, if you will, BNSF, to want to share that railroad right-of-way, they were really concerned about having liability protection, right? Specifically, trying to get some of the same protection that the Governmental Tort Claims Act provides, say municipalities and public jurisdictions, if the public is going to be transported in that railroad right-of-way. So, we had a legislative lift, if you will, to try to get accomplished through the board, the support of the member cities, the Great Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce. I am pleased to report that we did have some success in getting that appropriate legislation passed in this last session. So that really opens the door. It's like, if that doesn't happen, the negotiation's in pretty quick, right? So that's, in my mind, that's a success. And so that legislation has been passed and approved. So that's on the legislative side. So then, speaking of the ACOG commuter corridor study, you know, that was done, and I think it was completed around 2014. Obviously, a lot of time has passed since then. Our region has changed. And so, really, the main thing, the RTA spent the time on this last year, is selecting a consultant to help us update that commuter corridor study. And if you're familiar with the commuter corridor study at all, basically identified high-capacity public transit corridors, again, the one I mentioned, using BNSF Railroad Right-of-Way from Edmund to Norman, but also looking at a corridor out to the east that connects Oklahoma City, Dell City, and Midwest City. And so, in order to really take those projects to the next level and try to compete for some of that FTA funding, the study needed to be updated. And so, again, this last year, we selected, meaning RTA, selected Kimley Horn, a national planning firm. You may be familiar with them. They do anything from parking studies to in-depth transit planning and much, much more. And so we've been working with them over the last year to really take that commuter corridor study and develop what I would consider to be a transit plan for the region. And so I am pleased to report that in April, the board actually took action to adopt the transit plan, if you will. And that transit plan is available online at the RTA website. I'm sure some of you, if you've listened to the April meeting, you got a preview of that plan. But essentially, it identified, you know, goals that the RTA had for the plan and transit within the community. But I think, as important as anything else, we came out of that study with a map, right? A map of potential high-capacity corridors. And that map, or that study, if you will, expanded on the good work that ACOG had done, and actually added two potential corridors, one out to the west, and then one to the airport, right? And so that's really where the RTA is now. They have some success with legislation needed to advance discussions with BNSF, and they've adopted a transit plan. It's basically a vision. It's conceptual. And so the next steps, and working with Kimley Horn, and I might mention that it's basically a four-year plan with Kimley Horn to take us all the way from a regional vision plan to really, you know, ideally project acceptance and funding with the FTA. So the next year, what's going to be really occupying most of the RTA's time is updating that commuter corridor study with revised ridership projections, revised cost estimates. We'll be looking at some operating rules and guidelines, even station locations. And that's kind of building on the good work that ACOG has done. And then we also have to take the two new corridors that identify, one to the airport and the one to the west, and try to get them up to a certain level of analysis, so that eventually there's going to be a process, we're probably going to have to do some prioritization. So in all fairness, you want to try to have all those corridors at least analyzed to a certain extent where you can kind of have a fair, right, like a fair evaluation. So that is what we expect to accomplish within the next year. And then, the following two subsequent years, and I'll make my comments brief, basically, as you start getting into the third year, we would be looking at doing some environmental work, further refining the operation plan, further refining the cost estimates, and then again, ideally setting the stage for, in that fourth year, project acceptance and some type of local, getting ourselves positioned for some type of local funding initiative. So, the other thing I did not mention in terms of, I guess I would say successes or accomplishments of the RTA would be the public engagement. So through this vision plan that the RTA and Kimley Horn led, we had some public town halls. We received some feedback from the community, and we're really able to engage in that respect, too. And you guys have probably seen, you know, with the virtual public engagement, we actually had some really good turnout, if you will, virtually for those meetings. So that's really, again, just a few comments, just kind of an overall, trying to give you a sense of what the RTA has been up to, and kind of what the future might hold. I'm happy to provide any details, answer any questions, or, Mr. City Manager, if there's something I omitted, please let me know, and I'm happy to jump in and try to offer additional explanation.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. How about the bus system? Have we looked at, well, first, the first question would be this study that y'all, that we're needing to do, that you had spoke about, does that include mass transit study? Or is this just focused on the corridor?
So, the Kimley Horn study is focused really just on the high-capacity corridors, mainly rail and a combination of BRT, which is separate from, say, a typical fixed-ride bus system like we have now in Oklahoma City or Norman, you know, within our region.
What does BRT stand for?
Oh, BRT is Bus Rapid Transit. So thank you for asking that question. It's really kind of a hybrid of, let's say, a light rail service and a fixed-ride bus. It's a, so happy to provide more details on that. But, so the study focuses primarily on those corridors and that high-capacity transit. That's the study. The RTA, however, understand and has acknowledged, and we all know this in the transit business, is that without further improvements, enhancements to the existing bus network, right, that foundation or that feeder system to these high-capacity corridors, it's going to be difficult to have success. So I would say the overall long-term vision is some integration of all of those systems. And what's encouraging to me is, and thank you for the time, what's encouraging to me is both Oklahoma City and Norman are currently conducting studies to just concentrate on improving the fixed-ride bus system, with the idea of continuing to enhance really what is going to be the backbone or the feeder of the high capacity. I know the City of Edmund is in the process of renewing their contract for their transit service. So I get the sense that even though it's not all under one umbrella now, like Oklahoma City, Norman, we're all continuing to try to improve our, improve our existing system for, you know, looking to the future.
What do you, what do you project the overall cost of this study for the high-capacity corridor? What's that going to eventually be?
So, the overall cost for the study, it's a pretty wide range, anywhere from about four and a half million over four years, to the high side of being right around eight. And I give you that wide range because it just really kind of depends on, as we, as you know how it is when you get into these studies, for example, when we first started, we were looking at potentially three corridors, the same three that ACOG had analyzed. Well, as we went through the planning process, we decided, you know, it really makes sense to add two more, right? I mean, for example, regional transit, most major metropolitan cities with regional transit have some kind of connection to the airport, right? And then you look at the map and you're like, well, if we're truly going to be truly regional, there's nothing, at least at this point, going out west. So should we look at something out west? So that's an example of where now we've added two corridors. So things like that can add to this, you know, add to the scope. But...
How do we plan to pay for the study, anywhere from four to eight? I mean, is that, will you be coming back to the cities, asking for, I mean, because we're looking right now, I think it's $75,000, and obviously it's going to be, so we're going to have to pay for that?
Yes. How much is undetermined. And I say that because, keep in mind, like, for example, since I believe 2016, 17, when that initial funding contribution was made to the RTA, I think, I think the City of Moore, like, put in about $128,000. We've, and the other participating cities all contributed as well. So we've been able to stretch that in combination with some federal funds that ACOG has been gracious to work with us on. So we've been able to kind of stretch all that to this point in time now. However, to move forward into next year, we are asking all the cities, we do need additional local contribution. And the next year's estimate is about 1.2 million in terms of what we need for the study. So, now, this year's ask for the City of Moore is right around $75,000. That's based primarily on, one, the cost estimate, but also the fact that we don't have any federal funding to leverage through the MPO for this next fiscal year. Now, that doesn't mean in FY '23, there won't be that opportunity, or FY '24. ACOG, they're great partners. We work closely with them. We'll engage them each and every year to see what's on the table, what can they do, you know, to help. But with this upcoming year, we don't have the local funding. Moore's ask, if you will, is $75,000. Next year, it could be that, it could be none, it could be a little more.
I have a question. As we look at corridors out west, is there plans to involve some of those cities that are out west, Mustang, Yukon, because right now they don't look like they're on the RTA list?
Yeah, so the RTA has reached out to both Mustang and Yukon early on, as the RTA was being formed. At that point in time, they declined to be a originating member city. There are provisions in the trust and denture to allow cities to come onboard later, as well as obviously provisions for cities to leave. I could say, just generally speaking, depending on what the timing on something like that, if a city were to want to do it later, there would obviously be some, be some costs involved in that. But the trust and denture contemplates that.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Just a couple more quick questions. Of the cities that are, that we have looked at, I think Utah, Seattle, that have this, do they, do those cities currently have to underwrite any of the funding of that? Is it at a position where it can pay for itself, or is it a continual?
Yeah. So, so most of the regional systems that you're going to look at, and those are two great examples, they're supported usually by a dedicated tax, right? Usually a dedicated sales tax. And being a, ideally, and in most cases, being a separate entity from those member cities, and with their own, you know, tax, if you will, then they're self-sufficient from the standpoint of, they're just like a municipality, right? They've got a certain amount of sales tax coming in, they've got a certain amount of farebox revenue coming in, they've got a certain amount of federal funds that can support operations and capital, and they, and they got to, they got to make it work with the resources that are available. We are in just the early stages of, you know, that potential vision, right? So coming back and talking and discussing cities with continuing local contribution is not, is not something I would anticipate the RTA envisioning to go on indefinitely. It's required or needed now, I should say, needed, not required. It's needed now to get us to the point where we can go out, the RTA could go out for a vote to try to get some dedicated funding and get into the FTA program for capital funds. So, I see it as a short-term necessity, if you will, to get us to the point where the RTA has its own dedicated tax coming in.
And do, do you, so right now, the primary funding source would be a sales tax?
Right now, yes. And that's mainly because of the, that's mainly because of the current legislation.
Right.
Only allowing sales tax. However, I'm being very careful to try not to commit or speak for the board. What I can say is, I mean, there have at least been general discussions of, wow, you know, it would be, it would be nice if there was an opportunity for other mechanisms allowed in the legislation to fund the RTA, whether it be a property tax or something like that. Now, with that said, as you look into the far future and you start having capital expenditures to build the projects, there's, I mean, cities, I believe, would still have flexibility to use other mechanisms to maybe pay for their share of capital, whether it be GO bond, whether it be TIF. I mean, there's probably some flexibility there. You know, some cities may want to do it this way, some cities may want to do it that way, as far as coming up with, like, the capital piece of it, the local match, I should say, for the capital piece.
Do you have any idea of what would be required as far as a sales tax, being that's the only funding source right now? Now, if the state legislator were to change some laws where we could try some other way, what would a sales tax look like for this region? Do we know?
I mean, I just, I just hate to speculate, really. I mean, no.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I just, I, yeah.
Okay.
Because what, I guess whatever I say is going to, going to be, going to be wrong in four years, so.
And I know the Oklahoma City, I believe it was the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce did a survey to gauge the interest of the area, and they were reluctant to, they had somebody come, this is when ACOG was involved, they had somebody come and speak to the ACOG RTA board, but they were still a little reluctant to share a lot of data from that. So I, do you know what the interest is for Moore? The people in Moore, are they asking for this? And are they willing to pay for it?
Yeah, you know, I mean, obviously, I can't speak directly for the folks of Moore, but what I, I do remember the poll, I think it was kind of a poll, if you will, that the chamber commissioned, and I'm not sure why it didn't move forward, but what I do recall from that is, and, so what I recall from that, and what is consistent with our own surveys that we do as a transit provider, we do, we do, every other year, we do surveys of what we call non-writers. So it's kind of like, what's a community think, even if they're not using our system? There was interest. I mean, there's, there's interest in furthering transit in the region. I obviously can't give you the exact percentages, but the majority was, yeah, transit's important, it's needed, and it should be improved. Interestingly enough, we just finished a local study, you know, and asked just that, how important is transit? And are you satisfied with it? And now, this was in the context of some other city services, but transit, like, on a important satisfaction index, transit was the top third, or the third top city service of like, yeah, it's important, and we're not satisfied with it. So just showing the desire, at least locally, of some residents to want to advance it.
Okay. Well, I, when we initially did this, and ACOG came to speak to the City Council, and even then, I made the point, I wanted to be clear, that, that a bus system within Moore needed to be a part of this discussion. So it's a little disappointing that right now, we're not even looking at that. I know that Oklahoma City, Edmund, and Norman already have transit, bus transit within their communities. We don't. And I don't think... don't think Midwestern City does. They may, I don't know. But we just, again, I would just come back to you and to the RTA Board that is vital, and Howard, you know, we're such a spread-out community, how are you going to get to where you're going to go, or get to the depot if we were to move forward with this? And that needs to be a part of the.
Just to point out, though, Mark, those cities, those other cities are paying for that service to be had in their community. Edmund, in conjunction with COTPA, and Norman, in conjunction with COTPA, provide that service. But COTPA does not pay for it. Those cities pay, or pay a share of those services. So it's not like the RTA is going to be providing local bus service in Moore. It's not going to.
Right. And, and my thoughts are that, you know, maybe we should look at that. Maybe we're getting the horse before the carriage, or however you say that. But we should look at doing a bus system within our community before we look at this light rail system, which, once we already.
I'm quite certain that Jason would be willing to meet with, with you all to discuss those options, which.
But I understand that RTA wouldn't pay for that.
Okay.
But I also wanted, you know, that needed to be a part of the, the study. And at the time, people said, yes, it would be, it would be. And here we are, and it's not. But I definitely appreciate the input and the information. And that's all the questions that I have. I don't know if anybody else has anything.
And we're happy, Embark, we're happy to talk about inter-local agreement for bus service like we do for, like, a Midwest city.
Right.
Sure, anytime, yeah. Glad to follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Edie.
Thanks.
Okay. And now we'll move to item two. Just item two, oh no, our consent docket, is, we will, we do need to make an adjustment to this for item G, but let me read through the consent docket first. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held May third, two thousand and twenty-one. Receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held April sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Approve a tenant relocation in the amount of thirty-five thousand ninety-three dollars ninety-five cents for the relocation of Nightmare Vapes LLC, a displaced business currently located in the strip center and parcel number two, for construction and maintenance of the southeast Fourth Street Railroad underpass project. Federal law requires payment for relocation under the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of nineteen seventy. D is accept public water, paving, and drainage improvements to serve Mahogany Hills addition. Section one being southwest Thirty-Fourth Street and west of Broadway Avenue, application by Gray LLC, Mike Pierce. Item E is approve an amendment to the agreement with the Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency. Item F is declare a two thousand and six Ford Crown Victoria VIN number two Frank Adam Frank Paul seven one William seven six X-ray one five two zero two one Police Unit Number zero six dash two seven four, and a two thousand and nine Crown Ford Crown Victoria VIN number two Frank Adam Henry Paul seven one Victor eight nine X-ray one two nine one three nine Police Unit Number zero dash nine two three three as surplus. Now, should I, do I read item G? Go ahead and read it as printed. Item G is approve a revised job description for receptionists, allowing the position to be used in any city department as necessary with budget approval, placement to remain in pay grade one eleven of the city's salary table. And item H is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one in the amount of two million, two million ten, ten dollars, five hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. And we need to, a motion to remove item G from the consent docket for discussion in a moment.
Make motion to remove G from the consent docket.
Second.
Hey, we've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote to remove item G?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Consent docket's approved. Now, item G, Mr. City Manager, what did, what was the issue here?
Vice Mayor and Council would appreciate a motion to change pay grade from one eleven to one oh four.
Motion, we change pay grade to one oh four from one eleven on item G.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote for item G?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item is approved.
No, now we have to amend it.
Okay, now we need a motion.
Oh, to approve item G. I make a motion to approve item G.
Second.
With the amended pay grade.
Okay, we've had a motion. Who made the second?
I did.
And Melissa made the second. Call the vote.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. We have approved things.
Don't make that mistake again.
Okay, now we'll recess the city council meeting and convene a public hearing meeting for item three. And this is for review and discussion and receive citizen input and comments regarding the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-two budget as required by eleven Oklahoma State Statute seventeen dash two oh eight. Is there anyone here that would like to make any comments about the city's proposed budget? Seeing none, we just, we'll close that hearing and go on to the next item. We will recess the public hearing and reconvene the city council meeting. Item four is consider granting a sixty-foot wide driveway easement across the south end of Central Park to serve a piece of property located in the north, or is this end two of section twenty-three Township ten north, Route three west, being north of southwest Nineteenth Street and east of Broadway Avenue.
Vice Mayor and Council, in two thousand and thirteen, when the land was purchased for the Central Park, it left a parcel of land landlocked from Broadway Avenue. It's between the railroad tracks and some other businesses along Broadway. This property does have access to Nineteenth Street, but because of the underpass elevation change and the curvature of the street, it's just very unsafe for a driveway to be located there. So in the purchase agreement, as part of the purchase agreement, the city included a promise to allow a sixty-foot wide driveway or roadway easement in order to access this parcel across the southern part of our park. So where the maintenance shed is today is where that location is. The seller does need to formalize this agreement because they are looking to sell this property to a mini storage facility.
All right.
So the, the easement would include, obviously, roadway or drive, utilities. There is an agreement in the purchase agreement for a sign to be located along Broadway Avenue that would be limited to twenty-five feet tall. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So would that sign be located within the easement?
Yes, not within the Broadway right-of-way, but within the easement.
Okay, all right. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? We've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item is approved. Item five is receive court-appointed commissioners' report and authorize placement of funds into a court based on the commissioner's estimates of just compensation due those property owners by reason of taking of the property for the construction and maintenance of the southeast Fourth Street Railroad Underpass Project.
Vice Mayor and Council, back in January, you authorized staff to proceed with the condemnation process for six properties along southeast Fourth Street for the Railroad Underpass Project. Since that time, we've continued to negotiate with those property owners. We did come with, we did get a settlement with one of the property owners. We brought it to you, and you approved it. And then we have a second one that we were pretty, very, very close to having settled. And then we'll bring that, of course, back to council for approval. So what we're asking with this particular item, with the four remaining parcels, is that you receive the report from the commissioners and authorize placement of funds into the court for the four properties based on the commissioner's estimates as just compensation for their property that's needed for the project.
So the estimates were within range of what we projected?
Well, it was, it was kind of a mixed bag. Of the four properties, the commissioner's judgment, two of them were lower than the actual appraised value that we had by the appraisers, and two of them were higher. In, in general, with the over sum, the overall sum of all five, or all four properties, the difference was five point seven percent.
Up.
Up, yes, five point seven percent higher. Yes, correct.
Looking over these reports, would you tell us where the Amanda properties are? I couldn't picture this.
The Amanda property is the, as you're just nor, on the corner of Broadway and Fourth Street, the, the second property to the east, there's a little strip center there with a barbecue supply store and a vape store. That's the, that's the Amanda property. And then, of course, the Randalls Temperature and Control.
Yep.
You know where that is, okay.
Yeah, that was the only one. I just didn't realize that's what it was.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item six is consider approval of amendment number two in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to Public Works Facility renovation agreement with Tap Architecture in addition of the lighting protection design to the facility building.
The original design did not include lightning protection for the new Public Works facility, and amendment two simply provides for the design of a lightning protection to protect the equipment and the personnel inside the building. The amount of the design cost is fifteen hundred.
I read that a half a dozen times, trying to figure out what lighting protection was.
I did the same thing.
I did, too.
Hearing you say lightning.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Motion to approve, please.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion.
You have lighting in the facility.
Second. Call the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Item seven is consider authorizing the budget testing of eighty-nine composite self-contained breathing apparatus cylinders by Hexon Digital Wave Company in the amount of twenty-six thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-five cents.
Yes, Vice Mayor and Council, we're required by DOT to keep our SCBA cylinders in compliance with their regulations. These eighty-nine cylinders is due to be inspected and certified. This is a budgeted item and recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item eight is consider approval of a plan document and summary plan description setting forth the provisions of the city of Moore and the Moore Public Works Authority Employee Health Benefits Plan, restated effective January first, two thousand and twenty-one, allowing the city to maintain compliance with federal laws and to match the templates used by Assured Benefits Administrators of the city's third-party administrators.
Vice Mayor and Council, this agenda item needed to show up on the city agenda and the MPWA agenda. It's just on the city agenda, so I would appreciate a motion to table, and then we'd bring it back in both places next council meeting.
Motion to table.
Second.
Right, we've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item's table. Item nine, consider renewal of an agreement with the Moore Council on Aging for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, to provide programs and activities for the senior citizens of Moore.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is simply a renewal of the current agreement that we have with the Moore Council on Aging. There are no changes at all to the terms of our prior agreement. What they do is they provide transportation to our seniors, senior citizens, within the city limits of Moore. They also provide recreational and social activities for the people there at the Brand Center. We recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item ten is consider renewal of an agreement with Aging Services, Inc., for the lease of the Brand Senior Center to provide home-delivered meals to homebound seniors, as well as to seniors in the center.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is also a renewal of our current agreement with Aging Services. There's no change at all to the prior terms of our agreement. What they do is they provide the food that is served to the seniors there in the center and to our homebound seniors. They also schedule programming for entertainment and also wellness during the morning hours, I believe from nine-thirty to one-thirty is when they provide the, some services there at the Brand Center. We recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item eleven is consider approval of option one on an agreement with OG&E for replacement of a non-functioning city-owned high-mast fixtures along I-35 with high-mast LED lighting fixtures.
Vice Mayor and Council, most of the lights in the city are owned by OG&E. However, a handful, for various reasons, are owned by the city. The eight lights that are mentioned here along I-35, the city owns. OG&E is in the process of converting the lights to LED and approached us and asked if we would like them to take care of the maintenance on these lights, or if we would like to do it ourselves. I think the best decision is for have, is to have OG&E take care of the maintenance of this. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Item twelve is consider approval of FY twenty-one budget supplement to budget additional funds and related expenses associated with risk management, transportation impact fees, CARES Act, general fund reimbursement, reimbursement, and sanitary sewer relocation.
Vice Mayor and Council, we are requesting your approval for the following budget amendments. First, we are budgeting CARES Act funds that council approved at the May third meeting. These funds are designated for the design work on Thirty-Fourth Street between Broadway and I-35, and for the city's share of the Santa Fe Avenue reconstruction project between southwest Thirty-Fourth Street and Indian Hills Road. Second, in risk management, we are budgeting stop-loss reimbursements and rebates received to date that will help offset our health claims expense. The third budget request is to budget additional transportation impact fees for southeast Thirty-Fourth Street, just west of Sunny Lane, for street overlay, and Nineteenth and Broadway and Tower for street milling and overlay. The fourth item will allow us to reimburse the general fund from the quarter cent sales tax dedicated to the fire station for costs paid by the general fund to build fire station number two. And the final item is to budget funds in MPWA for the sanitary sewer relocation for the Little River Bridge replacement on southwest Fourth Street, east of Janeway. Council approved the contract with Matthews Trenching for this relocation at the April nineteenth council meeting, with the understanding that the city would fund the project, but that ODOT would reimburse the city for approximately ninety-nine percent of the cost. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Motion to approve.
Any questions? No questions? We've had a motion.
Second.
And a second. Would you call the vote?
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Thank you. Item 13 is consider adoption of resolution number 99021 of the City Council of the City of Moore, Oklahoma, approving the occurrence of indebtedness by the Moore Economic Development Authority in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5,200,000 in connection with the issuance of its sales tax revenue note taxable series 2021B Municipal Capital Improvements Project. The note, providing that the trust indenture as amended creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the general indenture and supplemented the amended authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding, bidding, and approving the proceeds of the authority pertaining to the sale of said note, approving a security agreement between the city and the authority pertaining to the deposit and the transfer of the sales tax revenue, ratifying and confirming an agreement of support between the City of Moore Public Works Authority and the authority whereby the Moore Public Works Authority agrees to transfer revenues to the authority and containing other provisions relating thereto. Lot of words put together there.
Vice Mayor and Council, items 13, 14, 16, 17, 21, and 22 are pending items. These have to do with the Costco incentive, which is the one for the $5,200,000, and the $4,100,000 items are for the Public Works Facility. Cameron Bertelli and Terry Hawkins are here to answer any questions.
Will you tell us how many years each bond we plan to pay off in?
Yes, let me look that up real quick.
I know it's why.
The Costco, the Costco notice to be set up for 10 years with the option to pay off early, and then the Public Works Facility notice for four years with the option to pay off early. That one, we probably would not pay off early, but the hope is that we would pay off the Costco one probably after year five.
Okay.
And both low bids on this, as you see Armstrong Bank and Bank First were payable anytime as well. So gives you that option.
All right. Are there any other questions on that? Okay, we just need a motion. Second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item 14 is consider adoption of resolution number 9921 of the City Council of the City of Moore, Oklahoma, approving an occurrence of indebtedness by the Moore Economic Development Authority in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4,100,000 in connection with the issuance of its sales tax revenue note, series 2021C Municipal Capital Improvements Project, providing that the trust indenture as amended creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the general indenture and supplemented and amended authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding and approving the proceeds of the authority pertaining to the sale of said note, approving a security agreement between the city and the authority pertaining to the deposit and the transfer and sales of tax revenue, ratifying and confirming an agreement of support between the Moore Public Works Authority and the authority whereby the Public Works Authority agrees to transfer revenue to the authority and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. We'll now recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 15 is our consent docket. A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held May 3, 2021. Ratify action to the city council on approval of a revised job description for a receptionist allowing for the position to be used in any city department as necessary with budget approval, placement to remain in pay grade 104 of the city salaries table. Item C is ratify action of the city council regarding approval of FY '21 budget supplement related to the sanitary sewer relocation. And item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020-2021 in the amount of $810,762.27.
Do we need to make a motion to amend B to pay grade 104?
Now, aren't we, Randy, didn't you say?
We would need to do that.
Okay, so it's 104 is correct, reading it that way?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Item 16 would be considered adoption of resolution number 45021 of the trustees of the Moore Public Works Authority, authorizing an agreement of support by and between the authority and the Moore Economic Development Authority pertaining to the Moore Economic Development Authority Sales Tax Revenue Note taxable series 2021B.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Item 17 is consider adoption of resolution number 45121 of the trustees of the Moore Public Works Authority, authorizing an agreement of support by and between the authority of the Moore Economic Development Authority pertaining to the Moore Economic Development Authority Sales Tax Revenue Note, series 2021C.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. We will now recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item 18 is our consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the Moore, of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held May 3, 2021. Item B, ratify action of the city council regarding approval of the FY '21 budget supplement associated with risk management. And item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020-2021 in the amount of $250,631.99.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. We'll now recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Yes, or here, excuse me.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Item 20 is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held April 19, 2021.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes. Motion passes. Item 21, consider adoption of resolution number 2221 of the trustees of the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting, authorizing the issuance of its sales tax revenue note taxable series 2021B Municipal Capital Improvement Project in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $5,200,000 for the purpose of financing certain real property and/or infrastructure improvements and paying certain costs of issuance in connection with the referenced financing in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the note to be sold on a negotiated basis, ratifying, approving, and authorizing the exception of other documents related to the transaction and authorizing employment of financial advisor and bond counsel pertaining to said financing and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes. Item passes. Item 22, consider adoption of resolution number 2321 of the trustees of the Moore Economic Development Authority, authorizing the issuance of its sales tax revenue note, series 2021C, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $4,100,000 for the purpose of financing a public works maintenance facility and paying certain costs of issuance in connection with the referenced financing in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, and paying certain legal and financing costs, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the note to be sold on a negotiated basis, ratifying, approving, and authorizing the execution of other documents pertaining, relating to the transaction, authorizing employment of financial advisor and bond counsel pertaining to said financing and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes. Item passes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. All right. Item 23, new business, Citizens Forum. Items not on the agenda. Is there anybody here that'd like to address the council about anything? The next would be items from the city council trustees. And then our, anything from our city manager, trust manager?
Yes, as you know, we've hit the rainy part of our season, and so just hope that our citizens will be patient because it, the rain does impact our street repairs, but we will get to it. So, thank you.
Okay, item 24 will be executive session, and we are going to have executive session in here so our mayor can attend that as well. So after the reading of this, if, if you're not a part of it, we ask that you please excuse yourself. Section 307, Title 25 Oklahoma Statute permits the public body to meet in executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet in executive session to discuss the following items. A, discuss and consider taking action concerning the city manager's evaluation